Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to our November Town Council meeting. Roll call please.
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Kalanga.
Here.
Councilmember Ramikas.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Short.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
All right. Any changes to the agenda? If not, approve.
I move the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Oppose? All right. Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Short.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda this evening is the establishment of an additional Assistant Light and Power Director position, approval of environmental services reclassification, amendments to the Fairview Cemetery pricing and policy statement, council designation of zoning administrator, treasures reports, and minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you. All right. 701, Public Forum. The Public Forum is an opportunity for town citizens, visitors, and groups to speak or bring to our attention any town government-related issues. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Groups are requested to have a spokesperson. If you are here for a public hearing, please hold your comments until later. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time?
My name is Randolph Nguyen. Mary Brogan and I are the co-owners of the Medical Arts Building, 121 West Locust Street. And I'm here to speak about the extension of the parking overlay district.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to interrupt.
Sir, that's later on.
Pardon?
This is public hand right now.
Okay.
You'll have opportunity to...
I should speak later.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I'm gonna close it this time. All right. 9.01A, Public Hand on Zoning Ordinance Amendment to the Parking Overlay District. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll run through this pretty quickly. This is an amendment to the zoning overlay, the parking overlay district within the zoning ordinance. This was initiated at a request of two property owners who are situated just outside of the existing parking overlay district, the owners of the Medical Arts Building at 121 West Locust Street, as well as the Four Seas Building at 302 and 304 South Main Street. So they had made a request. The request came about because we, the town's planning community development office was unable to process or approve. New businesses going into those locations because those properties were not able to provide adequate parking on-site. So they made the request to expand the parking overlay district. When we presented it to council, council asked staff to take a look and to see if there were objective standards that could be considered, to see if there were other parcels that may be in a similar situation where they had existing structures, the sites that had been built that did not meet current parking standards, that they may run into issues in the future if those uses were to change. So, staff did that. We looked to provide an objective analysis in trying to identify these parcels. What we did was to look for commercially zoned properties in any of the town's commercially zoned districts, C1, 2, 3, or 4. We looked to identify parcels that were within 600 feet of an existing municipal parking lot. That 600 feet was not an arbitrary number. That's the number that's identified within the zoning ordinance as being acceptable for satellite parking. And then finally, we looked to identify lots that had an existing footprint, building footprint on the lot of greater than 50 percent of the lot, essentially identifying those that were built out and would not have the capacity to be able to provide parking on-site. So looking at this, we identified essentially two areas of town, one on the north side of Main Street, and one on the south side of Main Street, where there were parcels that met these qualifications. The first was here on the north side of town. This is North Main Street running through the center of it. You can see the existing parking overlay district boundary in that dotted brown line running along Edmondson Street. The parcels at 402 and 414 North Main Street both met the criteria. Just to give you a perspective which parcels, it's our paint store at 402. That one's at 62 percent of lot coverage. The building right next to it is very close to that threshold, that 50 percent threshold of 48 percent. And then the two parcels adjacent to it, the one has no coverage because it's the parking lot serving the structure at 414 North Main Street, but that one, as you can see, is significantly above the threshold at 79 percent. So again, it's those four parcels, the 402, 406, the one identifies parcel 10 and 414, that were identified on the north side of town. Looking at the south side of Main Street, we have the two properties that made the initial request. That's the 10A and 11 parcel. The 11 parcel met the criteria. The 10A does have parking on-site, but not sufficient for the uses that they currently have in the building. So again, it's the 302, 304 South Main Street, the Four Seas Building, the CHAZ uses the Four Seas diner on the main level, but then uses both upstairs and downstairs of spaces that are renting out to businesses, and the Medical Arts Building at 121 West Locust Street. So the Four Seas Building is at 89 percent lot coverage. The Medical Arts, we didn't run the complete number just because we knew that it was gonna be under that 50 percent threshold. As you come further down the west side of South Main Street, we've got several properties coming down as far as that 404 South Main Street, which is the Culpeper Botanical business, which does meet the threshold. The 306 and 402 properties are both very close. So again, the 306, the Culpeper Cheese Company currently, that's at 37 percent. They do have parking in the rear currently that is able to provide the necessary parking. The Culpeper Republican headquarters at 402 South Main Street is at 37 percent. They currently rent spaces from the town in the town lot, as does the Culpeper Botanicals at 404 South Main Street, which is at 59 percent lot coverage. But as I said, those latter two are both renting spaces in the town's municipal, the town hall municipal lot. And then finally, there are the two properties on the east side of South Main Street, just south of the Moore Culpeper Hotel, at 411 and 413 and 415. So the 411, 413 is just under that 50 percent threshold at 47 percent. And the 415, the Culpeper Dental Office is at 59 percent, so that does meet the threshold. So, again, that's what we're looking at on the south side. So, we had advertised for the hearing, the, all of the properties that were considered that met the threshold. Again, we've got a couple that were just under, but they were included so that we didn't have islands out there and had a contiguous parking overlay district. And so, what was advertised are the properties shown in red for consideration of expansion within the district. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this matter and ultimately recommended no expansion of the parking overlay district at this time. They felt that there was an overhaul taking place to the town zoning ordinance, which this is a component of, that would be a more appropriate time to do it, and wanted to ensure that there was an objective analysis done to justify the properties that were considered. Staff believes that an objective analysis was done in identifying the criteria that were mentioned and analyzing the properties. So as far as what council's options are following the public hearing, essentially there are four, as we've identified. There could be, to follow the Planning Commission's recommendation of no expansion, which could be done either through denying the zoning amendment or simply taking no action, in which case, as it was a town-initiated one, it will die. Two, to expand the overlay district by including simply those two parcels that made the request. We do know that there are businesses that they have that are going to be seeking business licenses that without the accommodations will not be able to be approved per town code. There could be an expansion to include some other combination of parcels that were identified within red, that were advertised, or council could expand by including all of the parcels that were advertised. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions from council.
Yeah, I do have some questions, but I think I might want to wait until after the public hearing. That's all right.
Anybody else?
I just have a quick question, Mr. Mayor. Is it possible to characterize what the Planning Commission's views were with regards to not agreeing with town staff recommending the overlay?
Well, again, town staff didn't make a formal recommendation. It's ultimately, we seek to simply provide the information to allow the commission, council to make their decisions. But from, the conversation with the Planning Commission was wide-ranging. During the initial work session, they were contemplating a larger expansion than what was advertised for consideration, because there were really seen as being two ideologies behind the expansion. One could be essentially for development potential and to incentivize development on underdeveloped parcels by removing the parking requirement. Ultimately, they decided that was not something that they wanted to do at this time. And the other one was the one that prompted the original request from the two properties was essentially to alleviate issues for existing developed properties to meet current parking requirements. These structures were built prior to the parking requirements. We don't have records that indicate exactly how we got to the current boundaries of the parking overlay district, but it seems like this, expanding it to include these properties that have been built out, have been developed, would largely be a codification of existing practices and that these are properties that are functioning currently as businesses and without meeting the requirements. And so it would allow them to continue to do so as those uses change over time. So, the commission's, as I said, their feeling initially was to, their initial discussion was to look for a greater expansion of the district. Ultimately, at the end of the work session, the boundaries identified were what they were comfortable with, but then during the public hearing deliberations itself, they ultimately felt that they wanted to wait and look at this issue more within the overall overhaul of the zoning ordinance.
I have a question. So it's not that they didn't agree with it, they just thought it wasn't the right time to make changes?
That was what I took from it, was that they felt that they wanted, I think, more time to consider it, as well as to do it in a more holistic manner.
And just so I'm understanding clearly and kind of putting out the informational purpose of...
What this is asking, is the parking overlay alleviates parking...
Sorry. Alleviates the parking requirements for businesses that are within that overlay. This request came from two businesses right next to it, so the expansion would allow the businesses to continue functioning. Without the overlay, they wouldn't be able to, because they wouldn't meet the parking requirement.
That's correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you. All right, I'm gonna open the floor at this time for public hearing. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. All right, you can come on up.
My name is Tommy Martin. I am 402 and 406 North Main Street. And I've been a part of this community for years, and what really troubles me is that it got to this place that's even brought up. Everything I've done in this community has been for the community. I'm gonna spend the last three years of my working there as involved in the store, going out to the community and meeting with people about how to do the projects they're doing at no charge. That is feeding the community. So I'm the defendant that this got here. I think it's ridiculous. I have a parking lot, and a lot of businesses don't have parking lots. My parking lot is very valuable for my business and any future businesses going there. I'm disappointed that we're even talking about this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi. Sorry, I jumped the gun before.
That's okay.
I'm Randolph Nguyen. Mary Brogan and I own the Medical Arts Building, 121 West Locust Street. We're the ones, one of the parties that made the application, together with Luis Galarza of the Four Seas. The, both these buildings were built in the 1940s, long before the current parking regulations were in place at all. And as far as I know, they have been functioning very well continuously from that point to the present, without any actual parking problems. I can say for certain, we have been operating the Medical Arts Building since 2004 with no parking problems. We do have, we are in the fortunate position of having a parking lot. Luis has none whatsoever. And one of that was one of our reasons for submitting the request. We wanted to help Luis. He has a business too. Neither of these buildings has been changed. There is no space added on, nothing. This first came to our attention when one of our business tenants was denied a business license, simply because they were moving from one suite to another suite in our business, in our, I'm sorry, in our building. And so, we contacted Andrew Hopewell and his team, and, you know, we got notified by them, and we responded, and they offered us several options of what we could do to alleviate it. And they said that extending the parking overlay district was a possibility, and we could apply for that. So we did. I went to the town planning commission meeting and was there when they made their decision. I did not speak at that meeting. I didn't realize I wouldn't have a chance to speak later. That's why I jumped in, jumped in here, because I wanted to be sure to say this. We have, these are both rental buildings. There's rental spaces. They change hands all the time. We cannot function properly if anytime one business tenant leaves and another one moves to occupy the same space, their business license is automatically denied due to parking problems, which, as I've said before, there are no parking problems. We don't, it's the parking ordinance that's the problem. So, the, and the other thing to note on this is that, and I can only speak to our two properties. The rest of the properties I don't know or understand, but you cannot expect anything to change in terms of the use of the town's parking lot or anything if you extend the overlay district to include our two buildings, because those parking lots are already being used by customers of our businesses and so forth. But the town planning commission somehow came to the erroneous conclusion that all the businesses that needed licenses had licenses already, and things could go on for the next couple of years without any business license problems. And that's the point at which I wanted to speak and couldn't. We have a vacant space, empty space right now, and when a new tenant moves into that space, they will need a business license. That license will be denied because of the parking regulations, and we, we need some relief from this. I must say that this year is the first time it has even come up for us. So, that, that is our situation, and I wanted you all to have a clear understanding. So, I did speak to people after the town planning commission, and they said, "Oh, we wish we would have known that. We might have decided differently." So I think that's, that's a relevant fact to their decision as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Close the public hand at this time. 9.01A1, RR reference ordinance amendment, chapter 27 zoning relating to expansion of parking overlay district. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As noted previously, council does have options related to this. There is the planning commission recommendation, but as council initiated this in direct response to the request from the two property owners, we did want to provide those other options as well for council this evening. So I'll have to take any questions, and then Mr. Ramikas had had some.
I have a couple of questions. I always have a couple of questions. Could you go back to the criteria, especially the 50 percent? I kind of missed how, let's see, okay. Could you explain that a little bit more? What was, what's...
We were looking for, we were looking to identify lots that were largely built out, largely already constructed, largely functioning already, that may not, and likely would not have had the capacity or the space to provide on-site parking to meet the current town...
Okay, so it's more, so it's more than 50 percent, then that reduces their parking availability.
Correct. Essentially, the lot is difficult to accommodate on-site.
Okay, so, now, is there, the, the new map with the proposed new overlays? Okay, look, so on the north end, I was a little surprised to see that, because that, they're along Piedmont. Seems to me those businesses have always had adequate parking at the paint store and the next door, and then the other building that's just been renovated. I mean, it's been a restaurant for decades and never seemed to have a problem with parking why those three properties were identified. I mean, what, why would they need to be included if they already have parking?
And again, that's council's discretion. We were looking to set those objective standards, and when they met the criteria that we'd identified, we included them for consideration.
Okay. Basically, the same question for on the south end, the corner lot there across from the 711. I mean, they've had, they've got parking in the back, left over from when it was a funeral home decades ago, and, but you're saying that they don't have adequate parking for what's in there now?
When you look at it, they don't have the parking on-site. They have had an agreement with the parcels to the rear to have some shared parking. We did have an issue with a business that wanted to go in there where it would have exceeded the parking requirements, and that business ended up not locating there for those reasons.
Yeah, then I guess the only other question is, kind of going along with the gentleman said there about the Medical Arts Building and the Four Seas property, I, I mean, with the two parking lots right next door, across the street, I don't see where the parking problem is outside of, you know, looking at an ordinance that determines, okay, if you've got this much square foot, you need to have this much on-site parking. And I think all this preceded that particular ordinance. But where's the parking problem, is my question? Outside of, on paper.
And that's staff's position, is essentially these businesses are operating, have operated, because essentially they've been treated as though they're in the parking overlay district, but they actually are situated outside of it. And so looking now at the code, when a new business comes in, particularly in the case of the Four Seas Building, that property, previously rented spaces in the town hall municipal lot, those spaces were allowed to lapse, and so currently they have zero parking spaces on-site. And so per town code, they don't meet the town code requirements. They could make arrangements for satellite parking. They could, again, request to red spaces either in the town hall lot, in the West Locust Street lot, potentially with the Culpeper Baptist Church to do it. But what we see is that they're, they're functioning currently with the on-street parking, the existing municipal parking. And so, we see essentially, this expansion is largely a codification of the existing practices that are taking place.
Right, but then bringing it back in line is, basically, the town has created the problem, is what I see it, the town has created the problem, forcing these folks now to make other accommodations when there doesn't appear to be a parking problem. But that's not my opinion, I'm getting out of my question, if you have anything here. All right, so, okay, we put the other chart up with the four options that we have. All right. I guess going back to Councilwoman Clancy's question here, if we don't do something about those two properties which started this problem, then, right, we're forcing them into another position. They really can't wait for the planning commission. I mean, it makes sense, I agree with the planning commission to take a sort of a more comprehensive view, especially after this new ordinance gets, you know, rolled out, that we've been waiting for four years? Okay, so, but that's not gonna help the businesses in those properties now, so they really can't wait, so, anyway. Where's the question there? There's my question. Okay.
I have a question related to that. I would... Do you mind going? Doing it. Is there any reason to believe that the current zoning overhaul, that they, the planning commission would like to wait to go through, if we move this tonight, that this would be impacted or changed any way by the zoning overhaul?
This would be incorporated then into the zoning overhaul as well, as council has identified it. If there were additional considerations related to zoning proposed on various properties, that could be incorporated going forward as well. But adopting any or all of this this evening would not adversely impact the update process.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I appreciate you taking the standards and applying them consistently, objectively. Yeah, thanks for that.
Anyone else? Thank you, Andrew. Motion to approve the recommendation.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make the motion.
Yes, sir.
Oh, could you put the options back up? All right. All right, I, I'll move that we take option three here, expand the parking overlay district by including some combination of parcels, specifically those properties that abut or border the town parking lot. That would be the Medical Arts Building, that would be the Four Seas Building, and the Cheese Factory, and the GOP Building, and the, whatever shop that is, that retail shop next to it.
The Chemical.
Yeah, it's, well, if we can get a blow-up of that middle section somewhere, well, that big, big spot. Can I, if you repeat that? Okay.
So you're suggesting just parcels 10, 11, 12? But not the ones up on the north side?
Right, not the north, not the south, because those are long-term fixes, but the short-term fix is just that those properties around the park.
And question, if properties 1 and 2, if they were to have a tenant issue, as previously, they could come back with an ordinance again, asking for expansion of the parking overlay?
They, again, they could request it of council. I will note that it may seem silly and insignificant, but public hearing advertising costs at this stage between planning commission and town council are up around $850 per issue. So it's one that we were trying to address it holistically at this time, in case there were additional properties that might...
Was there a second?
I was gonna say, a point of order, we can't really do this without a second. Were you, did you finish your motion?
I finished, I finished the motion.
You finished?
Is there a second?
I guess there's a second for discussions.
Second? Any more discussion? Yes? All right.
I think just the...
Roll call, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Quick discussion, if you don't mind. Just, I appreciate the fact that we're taking the standards and applying them consistently. I think there's a risk that if we only approve the parcels on the south side, that the question will come up, well, why didn't we apply that consistently across, across town environment? And so I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's really hurting anything to go ahead and approve also those lots on the north side, just so that we're providing that standardized approach.
I would agree with that. Also, we'd like to what Andrew... Also, we would like, to what Andrew just said, it would minimize the cost-
Jamie.
It would minimize the cost to the town that it would take to do this whole process again for the other side, should the issue come up for the, for the other side. So, it actually hurts us not to do it all, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, well, I would disagree a little bit, because those property owners have not petitioned the town to be in a parking overlay. I mean, that's a, that was the staff coming up and then, you know, with the proposed map.
You're, you're right, at the same time-
Excuse me, can I finish? So, and, so I'm also inclined to agree with the planning commission, I mean, we put a lot of work on those, on those guys, and, and I think it makes sense for them to do it later and take a better look at it. And like I said, there's an immediate need for those businesses just in that one square today, and I don't think we're hurting anybody in the north or the south, because there hasn't been a problem there for parking, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I know.
All right, Ms. Taylor?
We might actually have three different opinions here. While I, I would, in looking at what the planning commission and their reasoning, waiting until the zoning overhaul is, you know, in effect or being worked on, it does make sense to me to keep things at a minimum, as far as what we would change right now, given that the two properties that requested the expansion are, would be harmed if we didn't, but there is no problem right now with what they're doing. It made sense to me to include them in the parking overlay district for now. As far as including the whole block around there, I was of the opinion that we wait, if we decide to do any more at all, to do anything beyond just, just the two properties. But the reasoning makes sense, I guess, to have it just around the, the town parking lot that you refer to, so I was more in, keep, more in line with option number two, but be happy to go along with number, number three. I disagree with, with going to all the areas that have been identified at this point.
Janie, you want to speak?
Just a comment, didn't we, I think Andrew mentioned that there was a business that wanted to occupy something in the old Chlor Funeral Home business, and because of the parking, they didn't go forward with that.
Correct.
Okay, so, there you are. You know, I'm just thinking that someone else that wants to come in that building, or some of the others, they're going to go through the same process again. So instead of doing this multiple times, I don't see the benefit of waiting, I would go ahead and do the whole overlay.
And I would agree with that, because the reason we're here now is because it came up, right? So there might not be an issue now, there might not be someone in there now on the other side who needs to do this, but who knows what's going to happen next week, next month, could be a new business, and then here we are again. So I'm, I am of the mindset that-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Somebody want to make an amendment?
Want to do amendment, Janie?
Well, do you have to roll?
Ms. Clancy? Let me get, Janie, you want to do amendment?
I would make the amendment, we'd go with number four, option number four, to include it all.
My second thought.
Wait, do we have to roll call and?
After, after the second, I mean, after discussion.
This is the second.
Right, after, who's seconded?
I did.
Any more discussion?
Was that an amendment, or actually a different, what's the different motion?
No. I thought somebody made an amendment here.
Okay, well, the amendment is a little different choice than what we had, that's-
Yeah, the mayor was asking for an amendment to the original motion.
Right.
So I think the amendment to that original motion would be to include the remaining advertised parcels.
Who's second?
Number four.
All right, anyone else?
Somebody make the motion?
Yeah.
Janie made the motion? Was there a second?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
All right, now let me get my roll call, please. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
We're voting on the amendment now, correct?
That's correct.
Right.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramikas?
No.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Nine, nine point oh one B, public hearing on-
Mr. Mayor, that was just the amendment, we still have a motion on-
Oh, that's, that's right, that's right.
On the main, I mean, the vote on the main motion.
All right.
Councilmember Clancy? So, this is the main motion of Mr. Ramikas.
Supersede that other motion, though?
Right.
So it'd be no?
So it'd be yes or no. You voted for the amendment to amend the motion.
Right.
It's a matter of yes or no motion.
Mm-hmm.
So the emotion is, the motion is?
Right.
Aye.
Got you, thank you.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramikas?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, let's get back on track. Nine point oh one B, public hearing on conditional use permit for accessory dwelling unit, Jared.
So CUP 4221 involves a request to construct approximately 960 square foot accessory dwelling unit on property at 1822 Orange Road. The proposed unit is one-story and includes two bedrooms, a bathroom, a kitchen, and an open family room. The structure is proposed to be located approximately 20 feet behind the main dwelling. The property is .33 acres, located in the R2 medium-density residential district. Accessory dwelling units are permitted in the R2 district with an approved conditional use permit and subject to additional regulations, which include maximum floor area, minimum separation from the primary dwelling, maximum number of bedrooms and occupants, minimum required parking, requirements for connection utilities, and requirement for architectural compatibility of those structures in the neighborhood. So, to address those code requirements, an application packet was provided that included the site plans, as well as the floor layout. Planning commission public hearing was held on request on September 19th. At that meeting, the commission had requested an updated layout plan with a, with, due to some issues with the scaling on the original plan, that updated layout was provided at the October 17th meeting, where the commission voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit, 13 conditions. The conditions include those standards spelled out in the zoning ordinance, as well as a provision that requires performance with the proposed application packet, and then condition requiring reduction of an existing gravel parking area in front of the main dwelling, and that was a code compliance issue, bringing the property back into compliance with town standards. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all have for staff.
Any question? Thank you.
Just, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a quick, so it does sound like everything is in compliance to those standards?
So, as a conditional approval, they've got an existing gravel parking area in the front yard that exceeds, there's a rule in the code where you can't have more than 25% that's not green space. So that, that's a condition of approval, so they'll be bringing it into compliance.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right. Open the floor, this time for public hearing. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Would anyone like to talk, speak? No one? Close the public hearing at this time. Nine point oh one B1RR reference approval of conditional use permit at 1822 Orange Road for an accessory dwelling unit, Jared.
Yes, sir. So again, the planning commission voted to recommend that town council approve the conditional use permit with the 13 conditions as drafted. Staff would recommend following the recommendation of the planning commission.
I believe we accept the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussions? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramikas?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Nine point oh four A, RR reference request by Lollipop Properties LLC to appeal the ARB denial of case C0F4283-2023, Jared.
So I'll give a brief overview of the case and the decision and the appeal. Following the overview, Mr. Andrew Gatawski, Vice Chairman of Architectural Review Board, will come up to speak on behalf of the ARB and deliberations and decision made. Subsequently, Mr. Walter Gill, owner of the subject property, will come up to present the application for appeal of the board's decision. So on May 15th, town staff were made aware that the existing manual double door at 179 East Davis Street were pinto tie, which had been installed in 2018, had been replaced with a sliding automatic door. At that point, a courtesy letter was mailed to the tenant of the property, informing, informing them that an approved certificate of finding from Architectural Review Board would be required for completed work. Subsequently, an application was completed by the architect on behalf of the tenant and property owner, and a hearing was scheduled for July 12th. At this meeting, the ARB voted to deny the replacement of the manual door with the automatic sliding door, stipulating that the former door would need to be restored, or a new application submitted for a door that was approvable. That determination of the ARB was not appealed at that time, but on September 12th, a new request for the same work was filed. Currently, town code doesn't have any language that would set a minimum period of time before a repeat request could come back to the board, so a hearing was scheduled for September 27th, where the board again denied the request for approval of the automatic sliding door. Following that meeting, the property owner was made aware of the right to appeal the finding, and on October 12th, staff received a request to appeal the ARB's decision denying the replacement of the door at the property. So the, the options before council tonight would be to either ratify the decision of the board, which would require the removal of the automatic sliding double door and its replacement with either the door which was removed, or with the new door that got the, an approved certificate of finding from the ARB. The other option would be to overturn the decision of the ARB as requested by the property owner, which would allow the current automatic sliding door to remain. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Gatawski.
Good evening.
Mayor Reeves, Mr. Hybly, town council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Andrew Gatawski, I reside on Oaklawn Drive, I'm the Vice Chairman of the Town's Architectural Review Board. For being remarks in this case, please allow me to thank the town council for its continued support-
Sir? Could you move the, the thin microphone a little closer to you?
The little skinny one?
The skinny one up on there? Yeah, she's having trouble picking this up.
All right, there you go.
I think that might be better.
Before I begin remarks in this case, please allow me to thank the town council for its continued support of the ARB for this, and we are very grateful. During the case COF-4090-2023, the ARB has twice denied the application on the grounds that the installed automatic sliding glass door is not compatible in its function to entry doors found in the town's historic district. The automatic sliding glass doors are also incompatible with the character of the town's historic district. The requirement to preserve retained entry door and store functionality is clearly stated in the town's historic district handbook, pages 21 and 22, and is directed to preserving the overall character of the historic building and its district. Every other door, both old and new in the historic district, has traditional side hinges and opposing strikes. Automatic sliding glass doors are used in suburban locations, on large offices, health facilities, and retail stores, where fast and convenient movement is an important functional requirement. Here are some examples, and how do I?
Oh, you should just be able to scroll through this.
Here? So I'm going to show you some examples, you probably are familiar with these, these are some doors in the historic district. And we have doors of all ages and colors, and if you notice, they're all very traditional side hinged with strikes, and a strike on the other side. We have doors dating from the 60s, like the aluminum door on the right. We have newer ones, like Venacity. We have new metal doors, like grays to griddle, which are aluminum, but they're a color that is in a historic district palette. Of course, you're familiar with these, camellier, and other doors, which are traditional in their function. And some other doors, this is another door from the 60s on the left, and this is the door to our theater, cinema, on the right, again, traditional in their functionality. This is a door you might see in a suburban shopping mall, this is actually a Walgreens, this is a sliding glass door, where you want people to move in and out quickly, carrying their bags. These are also suburban doors, on the right is, that is actually at, where is it? Oh, that's TJ Maxx, I should know that one. More suburban doors on the left is Safeway, which you're familiar with, and on the right is the Pal Wellness Center. And these are all sliding glass doors that are used in suburban locations for ease of access, very incompatible with our historic district. On the left is the currently installed door at Pinto Tie, actually, I have two photographs of it. So you'll see that it looks very much like the sliding glass door at Safeway. So your decision is, what kind of doors do you want downtown historic district? Do you want doors like they are in Safeway and TJ Maxx, or do you want doors that are compatible with the historic doors in their historic district? Now, there are options. This is an interesting door, this door is just being installed. This door is being installed in the new restaurant that's being built on the corner of B Street and Davis Street. This is actually an automatic door, but it functions like a traditional door with side hinges and a strike, but it is an automatic door. This is a door that the ARB reviewed and approved, so if the Pinto Tie wishes to come forward with a door like this, very likely, we would approve this door, and they would have an automatic door. I ask that the town council support the ARB's ruling on this case and deny the applicant's request, on the grounds that the installed automatic sliding door is not compatible with the overall character of the historic district, and not compatible in function with all entry doors in the historic district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, all council members, my name is Walter Gill, and I own the mentioned property where these doors were installed, and I'm here with my tenant, letting you-
Could you give me your address?
179 East Davis Street.
Mm-hmm, all right.
My name is Paul, the owner of the Pinto Tie.
Well, we are here to present this new appeal to you. First of all,
Well, we are here to present this new appeal to you. First of all, my tenant and I firmly believe that the revitalization of the town of Copper Historic District is super important. The proof to that is that we both invested our money, time, and work to purchase assets within the district, and furthermore, we both, in my case, completed a full renovation of my building. And in his case, he is in the process of achieving the same goal with his own building. At the same time, we abide on anything that we do to the ARB zoning and building department permits, procedures, regulations, even though that has caused to us the loss of valuable time and money to be able to complete the project. Despite all this, we still follow all the rules and regulations in compliance with all building codes that apply. In this specific case, the door replacement, it didn't interfere in nothing related to the facade of the building. In fact, the existing door that was there was approved by the ARB in two thousand and eighteen, when my tenant moved in, and they did the renovation of the main floor of the building to install their, convert it into a restaurant. It was originally a retail, retail business. So I furthermore refer to the Secretary of Interior Standards Guidelines for Rehabilitation that states on their Rehabilitation Guidelines paragraph, the same, the ARB used to deny our request on July and our appeal to them in September. The paragraph stated the following. Number one, Rehabilitation Guidelines, the historic character of a property shall be retained and preserved. Replacing the door, nothing was touched on the character, and nothing was altered or removed from the historical facade of the building. Not even trim was replaced because all the original structures of the facade still remain the same. We not touch any of the original wood of the new walls under the, under the, the new facade that we installed in two thousand and eighteen. Nothing around the door changed. The door has the same panel configuration than the existing door, because we used the same frame to install the new door. On the examples that the ARB showed to you today, on the pictures, they showed double sliding doors, which doesn't apply to our case, because our door only is light one side, and it has the same functionality for exiting purposes in case of an emergency as the old door does. Because it hinged out the other section of the door that is normally fixed when the, when the, when the door is operational electronically, but if, if in case of fire or in case of any emergency, they are still able to open full boat access to the building. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that on that guidelines, number two, it says, the removal of historic materials or alteration of features and spaces that characterize a property shall be avoided. We didn't touch any material or did any alteration of the features or space mentioned in this case. We were not using a historic door from the beginning. We were using a door that was approved by the ARB. I have the letter of approval of the case number COF seven thirty-nine twenty eighteen, and it says, consider this letter as your official notification of the action taken by the Architectural Review Board at City's August twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty eighteen meeting. The board voted to approve your request to remove the existing aluminum storefront and base paneling and install a new storefront system on the original seal and repair the original panels below. We have been doing everything in our power to bring back that facade to the original state. Because these wood panels that this letter is mentioned that need to be repaired, they were completely covered at the, at the beginning. Nobody will see them. But now, thanks to this approval and thanks to all the work that we've been doing on the building, people was able to see a feature that that building portrayed before. So we didn't really do anything other than improve the original condition of the building. So the other thing that the Rehabilitation Guidelines said is that distinctive material features, finishes, and construction techniques are examples of craftsmanship that characterize a property shall be preserved. We replaced, my tenant replaced the existing doors with, when, when, like, they using the same material, the same construction, the same dimensions. There's nothing of profile that changed on the frame of the doors. And he printed a few pictures, if you, if you would like to, like, take a look at it and see that, like, if you see any substantial evidence that the doors changed the facade of the building, which is what the ARB is arguing. The, these doors are adding a feature to the building, which is something that my tenant and I discussed when he mentioned to me that he wanted to replace these doors. He said, when the pandemic happened, it occurred to me that my, my customers were worried about pushing the doors, touching the doors. This is a touchless door. This is add a feature for people. I like a safety, healthy feature for people, because they don't even have to touch the doors to enter the building. When we went to the appeal on September in front of the ARB, we believe that we always are in this advantage when it comes to present our cases to the ARB, because unfortunately, two of the members that have the right to vote have to recuse themselves, because they are, they have client, client relationships with us, so they cannot vote on these issues. So we are always kind of like in a disadvantage, because we only count with three votes instead of counting with five. So, and when there's two more opinions, sometimes, sometimes that helps to sway decisions of the other members. Another reason why we decided to bring the case to you is because I think you can see the case more objectively. Because at the time when we appealed, and also at the time when, when my architect presented the case for us, we both, we both feel like this decision was made out of, out of a subjective reason. And, and the reason why I'm saying this is because one of the members of the ARB, the one that voted against it more, said that she has been in conversations with members, a few members of the street, that mentioned to her that the doors are not compatible with the building, and that for the reason, for that reason, she doesn't believe that it's good for the building to have these doors. So, but I, I think that the ARB shouldn't base their decisions on what other individuals that don't have any, any decision making on the cases have to say. Because if we do that, like, we will have the right to say, like, I didn't the appeal, because knowing this, I say, well, I speak with some other business owners and some other people that frequent the restaurant, and they feel like these doors really add a good feature to the, to the building. The other thing that they didn't want to even consider is that these, these, these doors are completely ADA. Like, I, I've been witness when people with disabilities used to come to the building, and those doors, like, with the door closers are so heavy to open, and they were open to the outside. So if a person come in a wheelchair, trying to pull that door out, it's impossible to do it themselves. So I think that's one of the things that I would like the council also to consider, that this is something that adds to the customers that he had, because a lot of customers come in wheelchairs. The other thing is elderly people, you know? For elderly people, it was hard to pull or push the doors, or pull the doors. So we feel like this adds some value to the customers that they don't have to. Like, and like, like we said, you know, like, I don't think it's fair that one member said to compare a historic building that we've been inputting a lot of money and resources to try to bring it back to, to his, to the historical value that he had before, to an airport or to a convenience store. Because if you walk in front of the building, you're not going to see concrete wall, concrete building walls or concrete building posts. You will see the perfectly exposed columns that sustain the facade, the facade of the building that were exposed when we changed all the facade in two thousand and eighteen. So for these reasons, we thought that bringing this case back to you and to hear if you wanted to consider to approve the utilization of these doors, since they are not interfering with anything else of the structure, or we didn't change anything on the facade, nothing that, nothing was changed. And, and that's something. I don't know if you want to add something else? All right. So that's, that's the reason why we, we did this. So we ask you to take a vote and see if we can get approved for, for this.
That's it? Thank you.
Again, so, so the options tonight before you all would be to either ratify the ARB decision, which would require the removal of the automatic sliding door, or overturn the board's decision, which would allow that automatic door, the sliding door to remain. And I'm happy to answer any staff questions if y'all have anything for me.
So in the Department of Interior Standards, function is a big part of that. Is that correct? Is that one of the first things mentioned? Where, where does function fall into that Department of Interior guideline?
Sure. So per town code, the ARB sort of works off of, one, the Secretary of Interior Standards, which are much more broad in nature, and then the second item would be the local historic district handbook. So a lot of the language as far as the, the appearance and the function, those are our local guidelines specific to our district, whereas those Secretary Standards are a bit more high level about maintaining character and not removing features that diminish a property, whereas our guidelines, our local guidelines get a bit more on the street level as far as, and, and so I think Mr. Gatawski mentioned the references where function, the functionality is spoken to in those guidelines.
Anyone else? No one? Thank you, Mr. Jared. Motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what we're approving. I'd like to, I make the motion that we overturn the previous decision of the ARB as requested by the property owner, allowing the new automatic sliding door to remain.
Second.
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Yes.
And if I, if I could.
Any discussion?
Yes, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
A lot of discussion.
I, I mean, I, I think that we have a decision to make tonight. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My mic is on. I've been recognized by the mayor.
Okay, Mr. Ramikas?
All right, so, yeah, let me give my, I guess, my reason here for the, for the motion. So I'm kind of hung up on a word here, and I think you, council member, kind of hit on it. You know, the historic handbook that was mentioned as, section, it says, calls for the retention of functional features of storefronts. And then in the background here, it reads, "The board cited the loss of historic character resulting from the installation of a sliding door, as well as noticeable change to the function of the door." And then in Mr. Gatawski's remarks, he also mentioned the word functionality. So we've got function, functional, functionality, and it begs the question, for me anyway, is, what's the function of a door? To let people in and out. I don't see how function can define whether it opens in or out, or slides left or right. Its purpose is to let people in and, in and out. And I have to agree with the applicant here that, oh, yeah, there's another section, well, based on his comments here, page twenty-six of the handbook, considerations under accessibility considerations, to provide a barrier-free access that promotes independence for disabled person, persons, while preserving significant historical features. It doesn't say all the historical features. It says significant. And I would think that by the example of the applicant here, that storefront has kept all the significant historical features. And who's to say that just because all the other doors swing on a hinge, that this one can't, can't also fall under the criteria of functioning like a door to let people in and out? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Travis?
Sorry. So I think, I think we're really, if, if council were to overturn the ARB decision, I really think we're opening a can of worms. It sets a precedent, and that is that sliding doors are okay on Davis Street. And so the next time that we would have an applicant come with a sliding door, we have set the precedent that it would be approved. This is the same thing that we deal with with the chimneys. So we have to decide, this decision tonight, is whether we're going to allow sliding glass doors on Davis Street. And I have very fond memories of growing up and walking up and down Davis Street when Gay Hearts was on the corner and Knackles and, you know, all the way down to the depot. And I, it, it, it just doesn't feel like a small town when you walk by a door and it just magically opens up. And I really, you know, it, it pains me, like, I love Pinto Thai. Your food's great. It's one of my favorite restaurants in town. But it, there's a character that we have on Davis Street that we spend all this money on CRI on to bring tourists here, because they want to feel like they're in a small town, and they want to have that charm. And I think that's having that sliding glass door, and it's, you can have automatic doors. That's not what we're saying. It's just that specific sliding glass door style. It makes you feel like you're walking into a Seven-Eleven, or it makes you feel like you're walking into a grocery store. And that's not the feel that we want for Davis Street. I, I mean, that's not the feel I want. So, you know, I, I really, you know, it, it pains me to, like, you know, that, that y'all, you know, have spent all this money on the door, but I just really don't think that we should overturn the ARB decision.
I'd like to say.
Ms. Clancy, you can go ahead.
I agree with Pranis on this. I also hear what you're saying. I fully respect the job and the work and the hard work and effort put in by the ARB. And I understand what you're saying, too, about opening up the door. Personally, I feel this one is a bigger, is a bigger issue than that. And the pictures that we looked at for the historic doors, and even the one that was said that if, if Pinto Thai wanted the one across the street that was approved, it's a sliding, I mean, an automatic door that opens out, even that one has a lip on it, right? So, and I'm really glad you brought up the accessibility, because that's what I feel is the bigger issue here. It's not, the chimneys was one thing. I think this is different, because all the historic doors that would have been approved are also less accessible. So I think there's got to be, I'm in favor of keeping the sliding door the way it is, and then also looking at the doors, the, how the ARB looks at doors, because everything we saw really is not that accessible. Multiple ones had lips, or, like you said, they're harder to open and close. So I think there's a, there's a balance between how do we keep the, the feel of the, you know, the historic district, and also add to it accessibility. I think maybe historic district, back when these decisions were made historically, accessibility may not have been taken into account. And so if we stick with that and not change it, then we are, we're getting in the way of accessibility. So I, that's why I hear what you're saying on the ARB point. I think this is different, because this is to accessibility. I think this is different because this is to accessibility and it's not just aesthetics. So, that's why I think this would be not necessarily opening up a can of worms, but kind of, should we, should have a bigger conversation about, about accessibility in the historic district.
Katie?
We're talking about accessibility too, and I'm going to ask this question. Do both of those doors open or just one side of the door open?
I can, I can answer the questions once. Do I have the motion? No. Well, both, like, only? No. Not with a motion.
I believe if I heard you correctly, it only one side opens, but in the case of an emergency, the other can be swung open. Can I make a comment first?
Yes.
Billy, I, I agree with Mr. Brown on, on the sentiments that I, I don't want to open up a can of worms and I don't want to change the character of the street in general. I, I understand Mr. Gill's position that, you know, you have followed all the rules. Your building is beautiful, your restaurant is, is beautiful. But as far as the Secretary of Interior Standards, it talked about character, and you said, "The door itself is not part of the character," and I would have to disagree with that. I think the door, you know, it's the first thing you see. You look at a, at a home. A door is very much a part of the character of a home or a business. And, you know, I understand all the materials, a lot of things that have been left, but at the same time, the function of the door, the, everything about it has changed, and, and to Mr. Brown's point, putting automatic doors or sliding doors in, if we do this, then yeah, that's, everybody can. I, I, I do think it's okay that people on Davis Street, other shop owners can have an opinion about this because collectively, they have supported the historic nature of Davis Street and parts of Main Street, and I think that is, you know, if, if they have an opinion, you know, and the ARB has any, you know, interest in hearing their opinion, I don't find anything wrong with that. The accessibility point is certainly very valid, and ADA requires anything new now to be accessible to everybody, but obviously, buildings that were built, you know, way back when, don't have that. We can't put elevators in these old buildings anymore to make them accessible for people to go in, in different parts of the building. So, everything can't be made accessible as much as we would like to, and we could do our best to, to do that. We've tried with the sidewalks. We've got things cluttering up the sidewalks that everybody wants to have their stuff on the sidewalk, and we keep saying we need to keep them accessible and, and, and able for people with disabilities to pass freely. So, we do, we do try. I, I disagree with overturning the decision, so I will vote no on this.
Katie?
Well, back to accessibility again. When you've got two doors that swing open versus just one door, you've kind of limiting the accessibility that way.
Alright. Did we get a second?
There was a second.
One second?
Just one last comment.
One last comment?
One last comment. Well, I think Billy had a question, but in terms of cans of worms, or worms with cans or cans with worms, I don't know if there are any worms left on this, on Davis Street that have that wide of an opening to have a sliding door. So, I don't know what we're worried about there. Thank you.
Well, we are also, this would be the second time in three or four, three years, I guess, that we would be overturning a decision by our ARB, and I think we really need to think long and hard about the significance of that as well.
Alright. Anyone else?
Just say on the issue of accessibility, there are many side-hung doors that are automatic. I can tell you, there's the doors at the hospital that are swung doors. They're automatic. You push the button, they open up, they can open from both sides. The accessibility of that sliding glass door actually, as Jamie said, kind of limits it even more because you now only have one single side, whereas a set of automatic double swung doors would open up and give that full passageway. So, it's, like, like, it's not that they're automatic, it's that they are the way they are. It's, it's, it's the fact that they slide, and, you know, that's kind of, you know, we can, you can get the same aesthetics with the same accessibility.
Anyone else? Ready for a vote?
And this is on the motion to overturn the decision of the ARB. Mayor Reeves?
No.
Councilmember Ramikas?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
No.
Councilmember Short?
No.
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Vice Mayor Yao?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Motion failed.
Motion, do we need a motion to approve the, motion to approve the ARB ruling?
Second. Second.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
No.
Councilmember Kalanga?
No.
Mayor Reeves?
No.
Councilmember Ramikas?
No.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Motion carries.
9.04B RR reference dedication of portion of Yaum Meadow Park to town right-of-way. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Try and keep this one brief with my last item. Parkside Apartments is a, an apartment complex going in adjacent to Yaum Meadow Park. Their entrance for the development is located off of, is proposed to be located off of an extension to Fourth Street that crosses Yaum Meadow Park. Essentially to, in order for the town to maintain Fourth Street, this needs to be dedicated as right-of-way rather than being town property. So, what's, this is the, the proposed development. You can see Fourth Street being extended down. This would be done at the applicant's expense. There has been discussion about a future sometime, probably some years away, but potential expansion of Gardner Street to tie into Fourth Street. This would be essentially the first leg of that where it would be constructed by the applicant. So, what would need to be done is essentially that segment on the left-hand side, the rectangle that's identified as the proposed 50-foot right-of-way dedication. The town would need to dedicate that segment of Yaum Meadow Park as right-of-way. So, be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Andrew. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Madam McClure.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kalanga?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramikas?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Town manager monthly report any questions or comments? No one? Hope everybody have a good night, a good Thanksgiving, and be safe. We all adjourned.